You know, I'm gonna ask every before I do everything. Um, secretaries report. I move to approve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Is someone?
Diane.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Diane is.
Hi, Diane.
Hi, Carla.
Um, treasures report. No significant transactions. Last time we discussed the investment, I got new rates, I sent them to charity, she was out of town, she didn't write back. Should I get approval from everyone here just to move forward? We said.
I think we did.
The approval was to go forward, but charity would give me the okay. And I just, I brought the information with me again, just because I didn't.
Remind me what we're doing, we're.
We're gonna be investing a money in a C D. And we've got rates from two different banks. The better rates are at Union Bank, which is not where our account is.
I don't mean you have a choice of about fifty banks at town's corners.
Yeah, they gave us two. The two that I guess they use.
Well, we do have in the minutes that there was a motion to invest it.
Yes.
So, I mean, it didn't say anything about getting approved.
Oh, it did, okay, we discussed it, that, yeah, okay, then I'll just do it. And at the higher rate?
In her absence, you are.
Okay, yeah.
Right, sure.
Okey dokey, then, that's all I got. I'll follow up with that tomorrow. Um, friends report?
Well, the book sale was quite successful, we made more this year than ever before, and we were worried because we didn't feel like we had as many boxes of books, but I think it was close to around eight thousand two hundred dollars. Um, I just had one question, we taught, we approved the bylaws of the friends at our last meeting. That has to come to the board for the M O U at some point.
Yes, yeah, um, I think we had brought the M O U into the last meeting, but we didn't, it was just for information, so we should put that on an agenda, maybe the next month's agenda for.
Okay.
Um, either approving or editing and sending back edits to the friends.
Yeah, but, okay, so anyway, and I just said the friends are uh, gonna pay for the mu- uh, ice cream for the birthday party.
Okay, that was what, September twenty seven?
Twenty, yeah, we moved it back, the band had a conflict, and so we moved it back one week, so September twentieth. We don't know the actual exact day when library services started, um, although, uh, yes. They, yeah, but it's sometime around September, October of, uh, a hundred and twenty years ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, a hundred and twenty years ago, give or take.
No, I know it was, there's, there's a few minutes, uh, from the select.
Well, yeah, but I mean, in terms of like the exact date.
Oh, yes, exactly, exactly, we don't know, the library services weren't born at such a time, they're not like a Sagittarius or something.
So, of all institutions that would keep a record, you would think maybe it would be somewhere.
That's a good point.
Um, village vibrancy project updates?
Yeah, so, uh, town manager Eric Wells was joining us, as well as the project architect, John Hemelgarn, so thanks for coming out. Uh, we have this on the agenda because tomorrow there's an important select board meeting, um, that will continue the discussion of the project, um, and I believe that uh, I'll be joined by Carla and Steve in terms of having a speaking role, um, to present, um, the continued relevancy of libraries today, that's what I'm gonna talk about briefly and some statistics, and then Carla's gonna address why this project is something that was developed and needed the background, and then Steve will talk a little bit about the benefits of the project. And of course, we'll all be there to answer any questions and to listen to what the discussion is, and um, I believe, uh, the friends and also the members of the schematic design committee were invited to come out as well, just to show their support, um, for that, uh, but um, I can either provide an update for, but the last, I think you all probably have an awareness of the last meeting, which was um, a mixed bag in terms of seeing the project move forward. It's a lot of healthy debate by the select board, uh, but there was no conclusion, they decided to continue the discussion for um, for this meeting, um, not all the special meeting. Um, and so, uh, this, uh, will be, I think, one of the two principal agenda items, along with finalizing the town plan for the the meeting tomorrow.
Is that gonna take as long this time?
It should, I anticipate.
Not without meeting, we aren't.
Uh, yeah, we get it, we'll have a lot, man.
What, do you know what time they'll be discussing the library?
My best estimate is seven thirty. We have the public hearing at seven oh five, there wasn't really much public comment last time, there's just more debate with the select board planning commission, I think they've they've cut, they've found a common ground on the and where, where that's gonna land, so I don't think there should be any additional real substantive debate there, so, then we just have a quick interview, so, over at around seven thirty or so. My, um, my plan tomorrow night, I've, I've got a my manager's report, just kind of teeing up the conversation before I hand it over to Kevin and team here. Um, the select boards, I'm looking for, I need guidance from the select board ultimately, if we're moving forward with the project, and what the scope is gonna be of the project. There's been some stealthy discussion about overall costs and debt load for the town moving forward, so if, um, I'm pitching to the select board for, you know, kind of decisions they need to make. If the board wants to move forward with the project, needs to decide, the scope as transmitted is at the scope that, that one we forward to with a bond vote. If not, the board's concerned about overall costs and wants to discuss scope more, my suggestion is to provide that feedback to the trustees through me, um, to then potentially reengage the design committee with a looking to how to alter the scope, and this has to be an interim process at that point to then go back to the select board. Uh, my suggestion is not to start a capital campaign until the scope is accepted and what's gonna move forward for a bond vote. Um, so I could see a couple outcomes tomorrow, we could have, um, the board wanting to proceed with the scope as transmitted, says let's aim for the spring, whether it's town meeting day or a special town meeting, and then the capital campaign can, can kick off, um, probably in short order, once the committee stood up and the logistics are figured out. Um, the board may make a decision it wants to reexamine the overall scope and cost of the project, and that way it would be need to reengage the design committee and go through that process and bring something back to the select board. Um, or the select board may have some more substantive questions, and I wanna wait before providing any direction until another meeting in September. Um, I haven't heard from any board members really in the interim, so I noticed from the last discussion, what we did at the staff level, especially the finance department, was look at overall town debt load moving forward right now, and some other projects that are in the works, and how that could overall affect in the outline years, or just find a big picture of that coming up, so. It's a big decision, so, big decisions take a good amount of time and debate by elected officials. I, I think having, um, I talked to Kevin about it. I think just resetting the why of the project right now is really important, because the focus, as usually has, turns to the money. But this, now, it's all the reasons why we've been working on this project for three years, and why the need is there for the community. So I think that is, that message is best to get provided by the staff and the elected trustees, uh, to talk about that.
And the feedback that I got from people was after that article in The Observer, was are you just guessing at fifteen million dollars? And, and I think, John, you should have said that there is like six pages of, um, detail, so it isn't a guess, then.
No, the guess was only how much it's going to increase.
Yeah, but somehow people read that as, this is what we're, we're just guessing at this.
Should roll my eyes.
I, well, I have, but I mean, I think that needs to be stressed.
When you see how long, I mean, it was so elaborate and
Yeah.
and detail that it was tiny print, because you had.
It was pages and pages, but somehow what they I mean, you, it was clear to me what you were saying, but people read that and said, oh my gosh, they're just guessing at this, and it's a lot.
Bring a paper copy of that with me to, just to hold up and show.
Yeah, that might be good, I mean.
Maybe I'll tape it, you know. Oh, I can just, I hold it up and let it fall down.
Well, and, and the other thing related to the cost was, you know, the, the select board mentioned that it started at, I don't know, nine? And then it came this, and then it, it's, you know, nine to the thirteen to the fifteen, but the nine was such a rough estimate.
That was just, it was just the building.
Yeah.
That's the answer, there's, there's several answers to that, and I'm prepared to dive into that.
So, and I think and, and I think that that's, that means, I mean, like, this is like our second chance, like, the first meeting was to kind of see what the reactions were gonna be to a lot of these things, and I think that this meeting will be a chance to kind of, like you said, kind of set things right and keep things going, and, and, um, you know, kind of remind people of the facts. And, um, and so I think that there's a lot of of stuff to talk about it. One of the other things too is we had sort of been talking about a new library expansion when Marty was here. You know, I mean, like, it was. We were, I mean, like, remember? I mean, like, we weren't, it was kind of like, oh, if, it was kind of a, you know.
Pie in the sky.
It was a pie in the sky, and of course, it was a daunting task, and there was a lot, and it was just, you know, and then, then every, and people just kept making do, well, we'll buy one bookcase and we'll do this, or, you know, whatever, I mean, like, we were talking about the fact that so, it, it's, it was three years for this, since the scoping study, but the idea that maybe there would be a need for a library expansion has kind of been.
Well, I think if you just look at the population.
Yeah.
I mean, the original library was built for a town population of a thousand people. And, we're ten times that. That, that, that was, we now have more patrons than the size of the library when the first edition was put on.
The size of the town, well, the first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The number of patrons is more than the entire town population when we put the first edition on the library.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how many editions does the library have?
Two.
Two.
The original and then two editions, we're in the ninety-six edition. That right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, what was the population then?
Uh, in the nineties, it was probably half the size, it's probably around five thousand.
I think so, I think around five thousand five hundred, something like that, yeah.
So.
Yeah, town's doubled in population the last, most of my years.
I think the, the other thing financially that could come up is the cost per per square foot, um, for the addition, and I think it's it's reasonable to point out, um, that the library project in Middlebury right now is a renovation and expansion, and it comes in at about the same cost per square foot. Um, and then, if you saw the article about the magic building that's being built at the Catamount Center, well, um, the cost per square foot's about the same there.
Well, well, but that's because they got that number big.
Oh. They've got it really rotten.
Oh, okay.
Because they're not, hundred to six hundred dollars, so I have no idea when they're.
Did they really get that from you? Well, that's too funny, okay, all right, we shouldn't reference that, then.
They wanna cite the same single source. But, but the, the project in Middlebury is coming in about the same cost per square foot, um, and I think, you know, libraries have a certain level of, um, both requirement for public accommodation, that you don't see even in other commercial buildings necessarily. Um, and also, sort of a, a substituteness that you only see in uh, what you think of as monumental architecture, like a church, or a, um, uh, uh, town hall, or, you know, a library, or university buildings, you know, they're built for mul- multiple generations, um, and they're built to lots, so.
I mean, look at, just look at the fire departments grown. I mean, it was, and where the town hall annex is, and then so, and the police department, why do they think that? And public works, why do they think the library doesn't need to grow when all those other things are growing?
They have sirens, so, you know, they're more visible. You're funny, the.
When we went into this, uh, you know, we started funding the community spaces project, we paid with the federal art money. We knew, the town knew coming into this, that those bonds for the public safety buildings were gonna be start being paid off, and they're starting to be paid off right now, and kind of planning for what's that next big public infrastructure investment, so did the, did the public safety, did the public works that we needed, and now this whole command spaces thought we had at the time was, what are these places for the community to gather and, and share, and what does the town want for that, and it was pretty clear through that process that I was looking at the renovation addition here at the community center in town corners, and now we're kind of, you know, can never predict what the economy is doing years, a few years back, but um, we've had a really good process, and this is always the, the money part, it's the hardest part.
Do you think?
I'm sorry, I'm behind your reason.
I am, sorry.
You're apparent, you got eyes in the back of your head.
Oh, yeah, but then I I make glasses, and now they're progressives, and the eyes, and that hair, it's really hindering my vision.
So, yeah, I did do a little bit of analysis to get how we got from the, the seven million that Jean has mentioned more than once. Uh, when in reality it was seven point eight million, so it actually was about almost eight at the time. Um, there's two or three spots where costs haven't even wide as figure. Um, one, well, first off, I used a five hundred dollars per, per square foot figure for new construction. The estimate that came in last year, that we presented, that was a thirteen point four main dollar body, it was at five hundred and twenty-four. That's only a five percent increase over a year and a half. So that really was, I, I, I jumped ahead about the right amount there. Um, but you guys should know this, this, the number of square feet of addition grew significantly, like, went from nine dollars per feet to eleven and a half thousand. That added a lot, but that added a fair amount, five hundred dollars of square foot. So you, you should be ready for that, that's, that's something that's happened. Um, the, I guessed that two hundred dollars per square foot for renovation costs, well, that's a total guess, and we have no idea how it's gonna be renovated. We decided ultimately to put in all the heating and ventilating system. So it's actually closer to two hundred and sixty dollars. So that's about, uh, uh, about five hundred thousand dollars in increased cost versus the million and a half that is resulting from the bigger addition. Uh, and then, lastly is the thing to remind people right off, is that first estimate was comparing one building option to another building option, and therefore it was only the building costs. There were no site costs associated with any of those numbers that we presented.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
The site costs are gonna depend entirely on what site we use. So, we now have, um, two point four million dollars of the site cost, or, yeah, two point four. Of which almost a million or eight hundred and thirty thousand is improvements to the green next door that really have nothing to do with the line. So those are points, just to remember, that our guesses at the dollars per square foot were actually pretty good. But, the inflationary piece that we didn't have any control, was really what's happened since that estimate was presented. Right, that was in October of twenty uh, three. As we know, things have kind of been a little topsy-turvy since then, um, but and still continue.
This site costs are of value because we're gonna be changing the space occupied by building. And so, the other use of that it's, it's a a separate component, but a necessary component to making the whole thing work.
It includes.
But there would have been site costs no matter where we were.
Right, there is no land acquisition cost included here because you're using the site. Are there pieces of this site that may perhaps, something might be more expensive than somewhere else? Maybe, maybe not. We're adding the left-hand turn lane over here at the end. Maybe on the new site, you don't have to do that, but that makes this site much more viable, and it makes a lot of other improvements as well, so, um.
The A T R system, does that have any efficiency savings?
Yes. I don't have no idea right now what those are.
Oh, we looked into.
We did look into.
Yeah, we did look into the various.
Looking in places where you might actually get a better interest rate, depending on some of the e- energy efficiency measures. Um, I mean, not to mention that you're bound to follow with the Vermont Energy Code, which is not a, an insignificant document, it's something you have to do, and, um, it's not necessarily cheap to comply with that, and it does ensure that you have a good efficiency system.
I, I think though, what's scoped right now is all air source heat pumps. Um, so we would be, the, the building would be potentially fossil fuel-free uh, since it would be all electric heat and air conditioning.
Sorry, for that gas purpose.
Right, which.
But then that's a point in case there's a, uh, and there's a, a power up.
Ninety-nine percent fossil. So, so it is, um, significant, um, environmental for, for what we're trying.
But I'm asking, because we're talking about money. If there are if I'm trying to think of ways of framing where it is a lot of money, but there are costs to not doing it. And so, what are the savings that we can? You know, there are always gonna be costs, but some things that cost upfront have less of a cost later, and if there's a way to add that to the framing. And then also, I think big numbers are scary right now, and I think a lot of people feel less stable.
I think that's why that the average tax increase per household is an important number to get out there that
one hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and twelve dollars.
Yeah.
Hundred and twelve dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Okay.
With, and that assumed we, we had to bond for the full fifteen million if we had some charitable contributions, and then have to borrow as much money that, that number goes.
And you said a hundred and twelve?
Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars, assessed homes, the new.
That's like going to a movie practically, maybe two, if you're going to matinee. I think it's just, uh, for a comparison on an individual, like, people are gonna look at the whole thing and go, oh my gosh, I can't pay fifteen million dollars, but they're, we're not individually paying that, but we all benefit. You know? That could be five books.
Well, that's what I like to think, when I was like, you know, lead it to a library, right? How much does it cost to go buy, buy books? How much does it cost to subscribe to Amazon Unlimited? How much do, yeah, all those things that people purchase that you can get as a patron of this library for free. And a lot of them aren't free, but as part of us being a citizen of, of Boston, I think that's important.
Well, last year, we circulated a hundred and thirty thousand items and change, and so it's about two point six million dollar um, savings if people were to go out and buy those instead of borrowing from the library, and our operating budget is less than a million.
So, those are, that, that sort of argument makes sense, and it's a, it's a bite-sized thing that the paper can pick up on. I'll present. Too, I mean, it's very, that's really in your, in your face.
I'll make sure to, to.
Also, the library things, the, um, the borrowed, the museum passes and perks passes, and, like, what's the value of each time those are borrowed, like, all of that is part of what we provide. And so, is that offsetting what we're asking for? And it sounds like it is.
Yeah, it, it is like an offset, yeah.
Well, I think people that use the library are very happy about this for a number of reasons, and I think it's the, the people that, you know, like, the, um, the committee, the finance committee people that said that there were people that didn't know about the expansion, but I don't, I think that they knew about the expansion, but they didn't know details about the expansion, and so I think that's another part that we can do this, you know, and on Tuesday, that, you know, maybe we didn't do well enough or whatever, but to talk about all the things that are gonna be a part of this new library, and you know, people that use the library are gonna be able to benefit from them, but then also some people who haven't used the library yet will be able to benefit, because we'll have a bigger room for community outreach, we'll have you know, more books, or we'll have different kinds of things. And so, it will, it will bring in more people, and, and even the publicity about having an expansion. You know, uh, upgrade expansion, everything, we'll maybe have some people that aren't patrons come and become patrons. You know, so that's, that's a good P R thing too, it's like, come visit our new right.
Yeah, I think the other comment that I've been thinking about when I talk to people as well is that, you know, yes, the expansion, the square footage is a little bit bigger than what we had talked about in the original scoping study, but the added space is all community meeting space.
Yes.
And that's not something we talked about.
Meeting room and community, yeah.
Yeah, it's that meeting room space.
Yes.
It's not library, it's meeting room space, which this town desperately needs, and when you wanna talk about a community center, A, I think a library is a community center. Um, but also, that whole, the first floor of the new addition is two-thirds of it is meeting space, it's, it's not books on shelves, it's meeting space.
And even up here is the small meetings, I mean, we're adding.
Yeah, but just to speak to that idea of added square footage.
So again, by the way, Heather says hello.
Oh, yeah.
She and I looked at it a little bit today and tried to hear where that twenty-five hundred square feet really came from, based on the very early programs that we've done, and it is in the lobby, which is outside the community spaces, which is essentially part of that, right? Because if you, when you close off the rest of the library, that's, you put the lobby, and you've got the meeting spaces are, are bigger. We didn't even talk about the meeting rooms that we'd have to check, because we had quite as many of those in mind. The other piece is that connector. And that we can put in there, the circulation space, but it's incredibly important to listen to that plan. Um, and so, those, that's really where the twenty-five hundred square foot mostly is, is, is all right in there, so.
One, one last cost thing that Charity mentioned when I emailed her, um, was the, the cost will not go down.
Yes.
So there's also a cost to not moving forward, if you know the library does use it. Um, it's gonna continue to become more expensive.
I was thinking about the, you know, unfortunate the, among the unfortunate things with the tariffs and other cost of things going up, is that once they go up they don't go down. Not, not where you were used to seeing them. So, yeah, it's just gonna keep going very true.
Well, my favorite comment still was, how are we gonna get a lawnmower into that courtyard?
Serious? Yeah, what, what did you say?
Somebody asked me how we're gonna get a lawnmower into the courtyard.
I had a tour, um, the, the Reverend at the Federated Church, he was kind enough to show me the clock tower, but I didn't realize they have an interior courtyard um, in their space as well.
In the Federated Church?
Yes, yes, there is a hallways. Yeah, I saw the town, it was amazing, yeah, uh, but they have two courtyards.
Did you see the bicycle?
Yes, I did, it was wonderful, uh, it was wonderful, the signatures of everybody who's been at Clockpoint. Um, and he said, there has, I actually asked him about drainage and snow removal, he said he hasn't had any issues with it since he's been there, so. Um, that was, that was heartening to hear. Remember those little solar powered lawnmower things, the little pods?
Oh, yeah, he was, has, has one of those. Yeah.
Forever, the kids will sit and watch it.
Yeah, there.
Or you could just do like a couple of plants.
It's not gonna have grass.
Native plants that don't get moved.
I have a, I have a thought to just add to, if I may.
Go ahead, Diane.
Um, I was thinking more about the idea of the more meeting space that will be available. It might be helpful to identify what meeting spaces specifically are used, for what purposes. Um, select board members might not use them, but they might think, oh, right, I know somebody who does that or uses that space, just to kind of give more detail than just to say meeting spaces.
You mean like the outside groups that are already using the library?
Yes, yes, and perhaps there are groups that have asked to use it, and there's no space for them.
Yeah, that happens a lot, yeah, and then even more so, I would say for the small meeting rooms that are envisioned, to get people all the time who want to tutor, who wanna take a Zoom call, they wanna do a telehealth visit, um, who wanna come in.
Um, who wanna come in and be able to work, and we have space. In this plan and those up that upper level meeting rooms to do all of those things, and they get used heavily at other libraries that have built those recently. Very heavily, it's uh, people can come out of their homes who are working in a hybrid manner, have a place to. Kind of socialize than just sitting at home in their basement office or whatnot.
Would it help to note that it would create a larger space for? Like a cooling space for people who need it, and I mean, we just had some really brutal days.
I will mention that on my remarks as well, yeah, both serving as a state cooling center and also, of course, in the winter months, being a place that becomes.
I've used it for that, the winter was.
Hundred percent.
My deck registered a hundred and two degrees last week. It was our record, took a picture of it. So, okay.
One more comment on you, you're discussing all the costs too, and and I think that many of these things that can come from you guys rather than me is. Better, it shows that you've done your homework and you know why you're doing this. Um, but when when you talk about those costs, that even though it's actually more than we told them before, eight million. All the other options would have gone up just as much.
Yes.
We made those same assumptions and that our new site somewhere would be more expensive, you chose at the time to go, well, it's the most cost effective. What responded to the input that you got from the general public about where the library is. Um, and you know, kind of go right back to that beginning piece, but that that was a comparative number. And that if this has gone up as much, any of the other options would have gone up. That you're still looking at the most cost effective option out there, and as we found out at the last meeting that. The cost going up every day.
Not to mention every subscription, subscriptions to everything that you. Pay a hundred dollars a month. That you don't need to pay. Well, and I wouldn't, when we heard the new number of the fifteen million, I thought. That was very brave, but yet it was necessary because it would have been, you know, it would have been um. It would have been too sneaky to say, okay, this is still just gonna cost thirteen million.
Yeah, well, but you would have only had thirteen million.
Yes, right.
Then you would have had, you would have had a cut after your library was sort of out.
Yes, and so it it's, I mean, it's, it made it a little bit harder because from the one. Meeting or from the one presentation to the next, it went up, but it it was the right thing to do, and it's. You know, it's, that's the truth, you know.
Yeah, and I think it's a, Charity also made this point, which I think is important, the trustees have really been guiding this project. And the trustees are elected officials who also are town members and taxpayers. They just, you know, devote their hours and days to learning what the needs of the library are and becoming kind of expert. Citizen librarians, um, but you are not immune from the tax increases and your neighbors, and I think that. Being fiscally, you know, straightforward and honest is something that should be a block. Even if it's something that's not a positive, but you know, I think that's an important point to.
Yeah.
To hang your hat on in a way that that you're you're members of the community as well, which is why we have trustees that are part of it.
I have one other question about this square footage. You said five twenty five per square foot? So. If someone were to say, well, let's, I don't know, let's cut. A thousand square feet, is that, that was, that's within.
That's the best, the easiest way to cut costs.
And and is that real, like, if you cut a square foot, is it really gonna cut five hundred?
No.
No. But it's on like. Where does that savings come?
You run a risk if you do that.
Yeah.
There are some things you could cut out, you know, um, unfortunately, you don't have a kitchen in here.
Yeah.
Pigeons are expensive, bathrooms are relatively expensive, but you don't have that many of those, and I don't think you give up any of that, you have a hundred. The elevator is expensive, but it's less expensive than buying. More land because there's no room here to put on this space, or if you don't want the floor.
Yeah.
So.
That's.
Exactly, but again, if they came back and said, you know, this needs to be back with thirteen million instead of. Fifteen or thirteen and a half, you know, then that will be the thing is, is, I think, Eric, you've got it just right, is you need to reengage that committee. That understands how we got to where we are and understands most of cubically. The priorities that have been set and which are the ones that are gonna be the lowest priorities. Uh, you know, and that's, and I would put it here, you know, and and you know, I would come up with a list of things that I can see that you might want to do. Now, if you make the the meeting room. Not divisible, it's only half the size of it.
Yeah.
We've shrunk the library, blah, 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 um, you know, and all that.
And then is there a risk that you come back with a smaller footprint? And time has passed and it's still fifteen million dollars?
Yes. Yes, that is a real possibility, well.
It's like a game of chess.
But I think we need to stress that we're we're building it, each each edition has lasted. A certain amount of time, we're building it to make this last for a couple more generations.
Mm-hmm. So I think overall, you know, in the town's history, as we continue to grow and the town's addressed those public safety facility needs, public works, facility needs. This is really a the most significant um beyond kind of those baseline breaking water stuff that we do. Uh, this isn't an important thing that we do, but the town hadn't been asked that question before, so I think it really puts the town and the voters into a new space where. Yeah, we can have a, you know, a really big expansion on the slider and prove the town green. Um, it contemporary time here, I know. I can't remember, you know, thirty years ago, what the bond bill was for the addition, but you know, it's not. Not what we're looking at now.
You can't even compare that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why I'm kind of just, this is a whole new level.
Yeah, yeah, you can't even. But then, since the population has exploded so much, it's it's spread out over more people in a way. And there are a lot of people who still don't, who weren't here for that. Yeah. I mean. Yeah, right. Twice, fifty percent of the people weren't here for that at least, right? And some people that weren't here kind of aged out of.
I just want this thing done before I die.
But, yeah, it's some, yeah, it is a big step, it is a big step, and it is. You know, I mean, one of the things that they said, and it was kind of sort of unfortunate that it was right after they had talked about the town plan. You know, because there were some ideas about the town plan, you know, but those are kernels of ideas. That will need to be flushed out and worked on, and that will take a while. Um, this is, this is, we've already done that process, you know, and ours is more than a kernel of an idea. It has been flushed out and it's been the process.
Community input.
Right, community input and and um and stuff, so, so.
Is it too late to add a pool?
But I mean, but seriously, on that phone. Um, for no, I know, I mean, there were still ongoing, as Eric knows, there are ongoing conversations, and there are people out there who very much want a rec center. And and they view it also as a community center. It's a different kind of community center, but it's still, and there are, as we discussed in the original scoping project, are few spots where there's overlap.
Yes.
Right, and so some of those spaces would just be getting built now with this project that may not have to happen. Again, be very, from what I've been hearing, why not, you have to be very careful with that, because there's some people who are very just as passionate about those.
Yes, yes, yes.
Type of 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 community center pieces as you guys and your patrons are about. The library and how important it is to the community, and you know, nobody wants to be duplicating. This is, and it needs to be coordinated, and I think that is the case, but I would just be real careful how much use our community center in describing. The library, because some people have a vision of a community center as that rec center.
Yes.
Somewhere else that 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 is also causing pressure on the pocketbooks, it's kind of future expense, and I've seen, I've heard that more than once from the select board. At least one of them is thinking of it a lot. Um, so, yeah, I need, you just need to be careful about.
Yeah, but it that the that the meeting room is not where we're gonna hold senior citizen luncheons next, necessarily, yeah, yeah.
But you could hold it when the DRV conflicts with the select board meeting, you might put us, put the DRV there. In the library versus in the uh, the meeting room, the lighting and zoning office.
Okay, okay, Diane, do you have anything else?
No, I'm all set, and and I apologize, I need, I need to bow out.
Okay.
Heather, you gotta update our bullet points. Yes, of course. Yep, there's been several good ones that I'll add and send out some folks tomorrow or early afternoon, that's okay. And I'll be the keeper of process for the select board as their staff, just I'll I'll tee up kind of where they are in process and then, yeah. Sharing the updates on the project and and the why, um, then I'll just, I'll answer your questions for me that the board may have, and I'll I'll get their direction like that.
And you think around seven thirty?
Yeah, that's my best estimate. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
You start last meeting with.
And that's tomorrow. Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, shall we move on, is that, okay, um, thanks, everyone. And you also are a taxpayer.
Yes, I hear Susan Johnson.
We have a visitor. Um, moving on to the librarian's report.
Hey, that's me.
Wait, no, not yet, that's that's Kevin.
I'll be real quick.
Kevin's librarian's report and then the staff librarian's report.
I'll be.
Can just listen to all this.
Very interesting, so.
And you're gonna, you're gonna sit forward.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll forward, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, and I was here for the last expansion, too, although I was too busy. Having kids to really pay attention. But you are, you're a stakeholder, too.
So I just wanted to bring in a couple points forward for the librarian's report, one is that our summer reading program uh was. Um, exceeded its record, we have a goal for minutes read, which this year was six hundred thousand. Uh, and that's just logged minutes over the summer reading period and Bonnie and. Um, Lori, for the adult summer reading portion, they managed to uh have folks log. Twelve thousand five hundred thirty six additional minutes, so.
Additional?
Additional, so we have six hundred twelve thousand five hundred thirty six minutes logged. And um I would say not, um, I don't know if it's seventy five, twenty five, but the majority, I think, are kids. We're doing that reading, we get more kids signups, all of the adult setups are are growing, um, and. It's great to get kids kind of reading what they wanna read, but it also helps prevent them from losing the reading that they've done over. You know, the school year, so it's it's actually, there's been some studies done that show that kids who participate in summer reading, um, don't have that summer slide. So it's really an important program that we do um to keep kids reading, and then I wanted to mention the birthday party, just real quick. Uh, the plans for that, and I had an ask of the board, I don't know if I'm allowed to put an ask forward for you, but I'm going to. Um, uh, so we have a full program, um, we're gonna have the town band coming in, we'll have old time games, thanks to everyone. Historical Society for letting us borrow those, uh, cake and ice cream, we'll have a table uh where we'll have these plans and. People will be able to see them and talk with, talk with us, and um if they wanna make a pledge, if we're at that point, ready to start doing fundraisers. I'll be able to do that, uh, but from ten to noon, the Historical Society is gonna be hosting a. Uh, appraisal event in the space, kind of like Antiques Roadshow, so they're having a professional appraiser come in. Um, and they're gonna be asking for a five dollar donation per appraisal, and so what I, what I told Erin was that. I hoped that the trustees might be able to fund twenty free appraisals, which would be a hundred dollars. So the people who maybe didn't have means could still participate in the program, because we have a tradition in libraries, of course, the programs are free. Uh, so, uh, he was amenable to that, of course, um, because it would be a good fundraiser, but I, but I wanted to ask the trustees if they'd be willing to fund. And their account a hundred dollars for that particular portion of the day's events.
What about, we don't have any precedent about this, do we?
I hope we find a hundred dollars.
Yeah, I agree, but we have, we have like a a ton for that, don't we, I mean, uh.
Well, just our regular account.
Yeah.
After we put them away, money will still have eight thousand dollars.
Well, I think we did. I second it.
So we're, uh, oh, um, so it's going to go find a hundred dollars to the Historical Society?
To the Historical Society for um twenty appraisal coupons, essentially.
Oh, okay.
And we'll have people sign a bad for that.
I have two questions, are there enough people here to pass a motion?
Yeah.
And. Is that like upfront in advance, and how do we pay for that, do you know?
I have an account, so I believe I can just cut a check.
Okay, and then we would transfer it from our reserves.
Exactly, I think that's how we could do it, or I mean, you could also pay directly to the Historical Society, that might be easier, but either way works.
I mean, we do that. That's true, we do it, surely, okay. I mean, it's probably for her, well, no, because she doesn't control their fund, their fund is separate, but yeah. Okay, she'll, she'll write a check.
And I would typically ask the friends for this, but they're already funding the ice cream.
Oh, yeah.
Ask, go back.
We've got it, I think that.
Yeah, I think that's good, oh, yeah, so let's officially do the. Okay, so.
There's a motion.
Yeah, okay, we have a second, all in favor, I.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will call Shirley.
Good idea.
Good idea. Yeah, that's cool, yeah, I like what you said, because our programs are free.
Exactly, yes, and it's a, it's a real good tie in, I think, sort of history, well, it's gonna be interesting that, I think it'll be popular. Uh.
Um, are the appra, like, so it's basically like if you have something. That you think is an antique that you wanna have checked out?
That's it, and I think up to three items, they plan to charge like five dollars per appraisal. Uh, or suggested donation, I should say, uh, and so we would be. Uh, providing coupons for people to get one item appraised up to twenty people, which I think will be a great capacity. If they're fundraiser for the year.
Yeah, okay, the cool idea.
Yeah.
Have they done it, they haven't done it before, have they?
Well, Aaron's family is.
Yeah, because I did see that. Yeah, yeah, the teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, but um, but indeed, it is fortuitous that it's on the same day, and like you said, it's all like part of the whole karma of the day. So it's all on the twentieth.
Yeah, a day of fun, and that's all I have, I wanna turn it over to Lori, who is, I think, um. Uh, but not, in addition to the summer reading work, if all those adult programs that you keep our meeting room so busy, you might be one of the reasons we need a bigger meeting room.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, you heard about summer reading, um, book club's still going strong, we have one online, one in person. The the uh, the people are kind of changing out now a little bit as people kind of. You know, stay home a little more, um, people who are older. And um, but we're getting new people in too, so that's going really well, um, current events. Very lively discussions all the time, we've even had a request to host a second group on Saturdays, which we need to talk about if we have space. Um, to be able to commit a room like once or twice a month for that. Uh, tech tutor going strong, people know about Cliff now, they think Cliff is amazing, and so we're booked every month. All of Cliff's spots for tech tutor, um, intergenerational reading group is coming back. For this next year, there will be some changes. I'll, I'll definitely be getting in touch with you.
Is there anything you can tell us about that?
Um, it just, you know, maybe the way we pitch books, maybe where we're doing it. If people have to eat lunch, you know, getting all the way over here with their lunch and all the rest is very distracting. So we're trying to change that point up too, so more to come on that, but um, we did talk about that. Over the summer and at the end of last year, so we, because we did notice some difficulties with it just due to. So we, because we did notice some difficulties with it just due to attention span and one of her elves and.
One girl, she was hanging off the couch every time. I mean, it was like. We'd see her face and then she'd be off the back. We'd see her face.
Too that once bones are out of school, maybe.
Yeah.
My attention span will look better. I know. But we're gonna keep going at it. We're gonna give it another try and in a, you know, modified way. Uh, Cook the Book, we had an outing to an organic farm organization that grows a third of their produce. To give to South Burlington Food Shelf. So we went to Converge's Farm. We got tour the farm. We heard about their um double organic certified and what their um, you know, their mission is. About food quality and food education. And then we went down to Wheeler House and had their flatbread pizza. It was a gorgeous Friday night. There was a band playing. It was really fun. You had twenty people there. So that was great. Um, so, yes, so we do do outings every once in a while with a purpose. Um, we just started another, we did Spice Club last year. This year is Tea Club. We're learning about true teas. This is a passive program, so it's not something you have to come here for and learn about. But every month, there's a different tea out in the front with a little uh synopsis about what is it? Where is it from? How do you pick it? How do you steep it? What are the benefits of it? So we're finishing up with our last white tea um next month, which will be silver needle tea. And then we'll go on to our greens and our oolongs and our blacks. And um, so if any of you happen to know of any connection with somebody who knows a Japanese tea ceremony. I'm looking around. The Japanese society has not gotten back to me. I've tried contacting them several different ways. I don't know what's going on with that. I've connected with a tea company in Burlington. They don't have anybody, so it's just kind of.
Lori, my husband, uh, they're Japan, the Japanese language is on his floor. I'll ask him if.
Yeah, I was thinking about UVM if there are some.
You know, I'm I'm making, you know, just because you teach Japanese might not mean you know a whole lot of Japanese tea ceremony.
But you might have know some other people.
Yeah, that's just it. Because I can't seem to contact that Japanese society. Um, from what their website is and their contact information from there. So that would be really helpful. Uh, Spanish will resume again in the fall. French is going strong. Uh, so those are still, you know, the two languages that we offer. Uh, we are gearing up for a haunted library writing contest in September and October in conjunction with the Historical Society. Um, so if you know of anybody who wants to be a judge for these things, please let me know. Um, I've got one judge so far from the community, but I'm looking for more. And uh, that's gonna be fun and kind of cute. And then we'll have a something two days before Halloween here on a Wednesday night. We'll read the winning piece and we'll have some goodies, stuff like that. So, um. Adult uh role-playing games is going strong. We've got Stu Shearer, who's a community member. He's our dungeon master. He's consistent.
Stu?
Stu Stewart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's um, I'm sorry, Stu Shearer.
Oh, how do you spell his last name?
S H E A R E R. And it is Stu like the food. Um, so that's been bringing in twenty to fifty-year-olds, more men than women. People who might not necessarily come to the library. So um, that's been a really positive thing. Stu's um.
Like a Williston Larp, Larpers community? Live action will play.
Yeah, I know what LARPing is. Um, but yes, and Stu would know all about that. This is not, I'm just booking Stu. I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
So, yeah, I do not play, although I am catching up on my stranger things, so. Uh, I know a little bit. Um, he's gonna be working on a workshop of how to plan a campaign in sixty minutes. So we try to bring even more people who like are interested, but don't want to commit to, you know, one Thursday night in in um. The month. So Kevin was able to get author Rowan Jacobson with his uh book about wild chocolate. So chocolate is going to be the theme for October. We're going to do chocolate with Cook the Book. We are going to do. All the NCAPS books with chocolate themes and uh we're really going into the chocolate, so.
Yeah.
A really great author talk. Um.
So is he a personal friend or?
No, no, I just um found out when he was nominated for another James Beard Award for his writing that he happened to be a Ramonter. So this, it seemed like no hanging fruit to try to um see if he'd come in. He's won a couple of James Beard Awards for his books.
Chocolate at the October Board meeting?
There could be. There will be at the program that's coming to. There's gonna be a chocolate tasting at.
Oh, no. See, now that is perfect, a perfect reason to have like a huge community, bro.
Yeah.
Like a sign up in advance kind of event. Um, we're finding that signing up in advance doesn't always work. And I mean, for certain things like craft afternoons where I need supplies and whatnot, yes. But for things where people might at the spur of the moment go, then you you don't want them to have to sign up. Because a lot of them will just say, oh, it's too late and they won't come. So probably won't do a sign up for that. But we've kind of got the Cook the Book people who are already involved in food, which have been very supportive with library stuff. So I think we at least have a guaranteed base audience. So Rowan's not gonna be coming in with, you know, nobody here. So, and then hopefully it'll expand beyond that. So, um. Um, Vermont Humanities, the new book, The Light Pirate. I've already got our free copies of that. I'm starting to schedule when I'm going to be using it. Um, starting in November, we'll start giving out copies. We'll rotate through the book groups. Um, in January and February, we are booking um Vermont Humanities dis- group discussion. Where uh where they lead the group discussion. We had that last year with Gather. The woman who came was amazing. Um, it was super and then.
It was so good book.
Yeah.
Yeah, the book was good, but it was really interesting, the insights that the woman from the Humanities Council brought in. Were, you know, because I mean, I read a book, but it's so nice to kind of really think about it. It was more than just. Talking about how much you like the book and why and stuff like that. There was really good questions, a lot of. Yeah, it's like, wow.
Because I run two book groups a month, you know? It's not hard to run a book discussion. This was something else.
Totally. Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was. It was incredible, so.
And that is offered free to libraries who are a Vermont Humanities. Um, uh, book li- uh, library. So and we already did the application and that type of thing. So um, and there'll be other um speakers and things that we'll have available. I need to read the book now so I can kind of plan out some other activities. But Vermont Humanities does have one other thing that I'm really interested in bringing in a speaker for.
What is the title of the book again?
The Light Pirate. It's dystopian.
Yeah.
Um, and it's about the environment. So we'll see. It probably won't have the same appeal as Gather. Because Gather, although it was a hard topic, it it was kind of a feel-good at the end and whatnot. I'm not sure how this is gonna play out.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I. I loved it. But this has been on my to-be-to-read list, my good, you know, so I've had it. And I think my sister might have read it or whatever, but I heard about it a long time ago and then had heard rumors that it was gonna be the book for the humanities. And I'm like, oh, that's interesting.
So read it as soon as I can get through these next two book group books. Um, Puzzle Swap is coming back. That seems to be a popular community thing. We've got to weed out some of the, some of the older puzzles.
What do you do for the puzzles that aren't swapped?
I bring them to Goodwill.
You what?
I bring them to Goodwill. We pull out ones that I keep, three hundred large, three hundred pieces that are larger. Because a lot of time caregivers of adults with dementia come in and ask for, do you happen to have anything? I keep a stash of those at my desk. Um, Sarah will rotate them in and out of some of the um, the senior centers. Every once in a while, so we'll, we kind of provide here and there for places. But the ones that are kind of subpar, you know, somebody dropped off a hundred, a fifteen-hundred-piece puzzle with their. It's like, that's that's not appealing to most people. So when the month is over, they go to Goodbook. So, but I always keep a stash for when it's needed. Mystery Date with a Book will come back in October. So I'm taking three subgenres of mystery. You get to choose which subgenre you would like a book chosen for you from. I wrap it up pretty. So we've done that for a couple of years now. It's always very popular. Um, I'm gonna be teaching needle felting to the craft groups and the senior centers. So that's another thing. It's kind of coming up. So that's that.
But all the things that you're doing, Lori, makes me think we ought to emphasize that tomorrow too. That we have Daddy the Bookmobile and we do outreach to the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so Sarah's job has become so great with her outreach that I've taken on the. Um, the crafting. So I do it every quarter at three of the uh senior living facilities. We've been trying out um at Whitney Hill to do a little more of life stories group. It was, it was working in the wintertime when people weren't so busy. During the summertime, people get out more. And so it's not as popular. So um, we're gonna kind of put that on hiatus and bring it back in the wintertime when people need more time to get together. Stuff like that. But we've got a bit working relationship with them. And um, then there's all the deliveries too that, you know, Sarah's responsible for.
Yeah.
To reach people who just, you know, need their books and don't necessarily, you know, use live. Five dads or stuff like that.
Great.
Great, great job. I can personally say that.
I really appreciate your support, Carla. It's been great for you to see firsthand some of the stuff we're doing.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm like. When I've got the time, I'm gonna go with, I'm gonna go to everything Lori.
Now we have to, we aren't done.
We're into new business. Budget overview, operating capital budgets.
And this isn't really the meeting to develop our budget. I think that's the next meeting, uh, for us really to talk about it. Uh, but I did send along the budget development memo that uh the town manager shared for all the department ads. The main thing, um, I think I want to point out is that we develop a budget that is essentially continuing services as they currently are. For next year. Uh, and then if we have anything additional on top of that, we have to submit that separately and provide a justification. For the select board, did they consider all of those on top of requests together from all the departments? Um, that's the process. The request that I would suggest we consider this year would be to move our youth services librarian Bella Dunn from. Part-time, she's twenty-seven hours a week to full-time forty hours a week. Um, and I suggest that.
Try it, because it takes about three years before.
So in part because we will definitely need um more, more people. We did a study to look for the new building, that just to keep things running as they are, you need one additional full-time and two part-time. So this would take care of that full-time position, just the hardest sort of position to get in the town. Because it comes with benefits. And the other is we, we need the time right now. We're so busy that um, we could use that time right now.
I wouldn't bring that up, that we're gonna need more staff in this. No, you don't think of it.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, I I think that right now we.
Yeah, just like it's an immediate need, as opposed, I mean, it will also be even more needs in the future, but.
I did, I think it's important to just, you know, to have done an analysis, which we did, of the staffing levels. Um, so that it's, you know, so that the the same sort of transparency. Uh, there's not gonna be no additional operating cost. But the additional operating cost is, you know, one full-time and two part-time.
She's twenty-seven hours now. What is full-time?
Forty. So, I mean, the main, the cost there wouldn't be that, that would actually almost be absorbable with our current budget. It would be about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars more salary, but the, it's the benefit. It's the benefit that um, that a full-time staff person is entitled to. That, that's what the cost is really.
Did we, I'm trying to remember when we last got another staff person. Was it last year? Because we had it in the budget and then it got cut.
Last year?
Well, I think it was just another upgrade, because didn't.
Part-time to full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Roki. Because that got cut when the town budget got voted down. Two years ago, I guess, you know, last year it was included in.
Yeah.
Wait, but didn't the year before that, didn't we do Bonnie?
I think Bonnie's was already, yeah, so it's been full-time.
She's always been full-time.
We moved things around with Bonnie.
Yeah, that's right.
So Debbie was part-time by choice and was the assistant librarian.
Yeah.
And when she retired.
That's right.
Bonnie stayed full-time, but was made assistant librarian and some duties were new. It was a kind of.
Yeah, and for everyone, everyone.
A lot of stuff got moved around.
Full-time position that was added was patron services.
Yes, yeah.
And who was that? That's, was patron services?
Roki.
Oh, that's Roki. Okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay.
So, well, that's good to know that it can, I expected it can take a while. But we have, we currently have four full-time.
Four?
Yes.
Who's the four? It's Christina four.
Well, no, you.
Christina.
Christine. No, I knew you.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Christine. Yeah.
Okay.
And our staffing levels are, our, our operating budget is good compared to our peers. We're not number one, but we're, we're, I think, we're three or four. Um, and our staffing budget is also around that. We have a pretty healthy, uh, compared to the other budgets that we would compare ourselves to, we have a pretty healthy budget in most categories for operating. Uh, I think that we're lacking really in space. Um, but other than that, the town does fund us well. Uh, I, I don't think there's a lot to complain about. Uh, but I do think it is that particular position, it is needed. Um, would be something we could, we could use now and we will a hundred percent need should be expanding um services. Um, a lot of what we do, like what we heard Lori talk about today, um, or the outreach that Sarah does, or things other libraries aren't doing as much of. And uh, I think that there's a lot of community benefits to those services, to having a bookmobile uh that can go out.
In your justification, just be sure you mentioned Wednesday afternoons at the library.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I will definitely mention us as an after-school location. Um, that's the main reason, I think, people chose, in addition, keeping the village vibrant.
Right.
Keeping the village here was that school, after-school purpose.
But it takes, it takes supervision.
Yeah, and planning. Yes. Now, how many, like, do you know how, how many libraries have bookmobiles? I mean, like, what percent of?
There are a lot, very few. Um, I would say less than, oh, half a dozen or less. Um, there is a bookmobile that has no library attached to it, the Franklin Grand Isle Bookmobile, that serves a lot of smaller communities. That's just a bookmobile. Sponsored by those. Uh, but, but yeah, there are not that many bookmobiles. Just like there aren't that many branches, there's about four libraries in the entire state that have a branch. As opposed to most states, most libraries are branch. So.
We're special. But I mean, like, think about that, that whoever, whenever they decided to start with the bookmobile, that was kind of an inspired decision. To, you know, that has had lasting effects. So.
We started as a little school bus.
Oh, interesting. Well, you were probably part of that too.
I was. Because Milton, I think, was, I don't know if Milton still has it, but Milton. Um, had one. It was a big humanities grant that Milton was part of, creating. I can't remember what it's called, but as part of that, it helped fund a bookmobile. And then we talked about it and went up to see the little school bus in Milton and had our first school bus bookmobile here.
Awesome.
Great. Um, does anyone else have any other new business?
I mean, that's why I have optimism for funding, you know, raising funds. I mean, we did raise funds for that first bookmobile.
And and the the upgrade.
Yeah, yeah.
Quickly.
Yeah.
So I think, again, it's the people that like the library, I think. The majority of them are going to vote, vote for the expansion and are happily going to. The majority of them are going to vote, vote for the expansion and are happily going to vote for the expansion. And kind of recognize the fact that it is fiscally, it's as fiscally conservative as it can be.
We've just gotta get this select board to.
Put it to the voters.
And hopefully at the scope that it is right now. So.
Also, I just want to point out, you sent out an email about a meeting September third for, I think that we could register for.
Oh, yeah, the trustee.
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, it was virtual.
Yes, yes, that's the annual sort of lunch and learn, um new tr- new things or um. For new trustees or a reminder of rules around trustees that our libraries does. Thank you.
Okay, so anything else? Okay, I guess eight fifteen we're.
That's pretty good, especially given that big lively discussion.